Today, in honorable members of City Council, in accordance with Virginia Beach City Code two dash twenty-one and the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at six P. M., Virginia Beach Convention Center, one thousand nineteen Street. The purpose of this special formal session is to hold public hearings, obtain public input regarding, you know, first, the fiscal twenty twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget and capital improvement plan, and also authorization of seventy-one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars to general obligation bonds, authorization for twenty-eight million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand water and soil utility bond revenue, authorization for six million, nine hundred and eighty-two, six hundred and twelve dollars for storm utility revenue bonds, increase in solid waste management fee, the levy to increase the Schilling Point Special Service District, and a levy to increase within the Gills Cove Special Service District. If you wish to make any comments during the meeting, just follow the two-step promise, register at Webex and also register at the City Clerk's office. The special formal session will be broadcast on cable TV, virginbeach.com, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the City Council prior to this special event. Okay? Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. Okay? All right, welcome, and I think we're ready for our first speaker.
The first speaker is Michael Ziders. After Mr. Ziders is Susan Grobey. Grobey, I'm sorry.
Hey, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Let me, I want to begin by just saying thank you to all you for what you do. You guys put in a lot of time and effort, and it's really, really least appreciated by me. I think I've had an opportunity to meet most of you at the Z, but the Z is not where my work in Virginia Beach began. My first experience in Virginia Beach occurred about thirty-eight years ago, when my companies, Ziders Enterprises, began providing support for the Navy Fleet and Family Support Centers at Oceana and Little Creek. Our corporate offices are in Woodbridge, Virginia, but our travels down here for the work had caused my wife and I to decide fifteen years ago that this is the place we wanted to live, and it was probably one of the best decisions that we ever made. And it's probably pretty obvious, I'm not a youngster. In my seventy trips around the sun, I've had an opportunity to do a few things. When I was in the Navy, I wrote a musical comedy that was toured through eighteen cities in California and Arizona as a recruiting show. In addition to founding Ziders Enterprises and the Z, I founded another not-for-profit organization called the Quality of Life Foundation, which provides support for the caregivers of our nation's severely wounded, ill, and injured veterans. I also had an opportunity to write a textbook entitled Entrepreneurship: The Art of Succeeding in Business, as part of working as a volunteer in Prince William County Public Schools to develop an entrepreneurship program, and that book is used now at Kempstow High School Entrepreneurship and Business Academy. My reason for sharing all this is that each of these endeavors began with a dream, and they began with a fire in the belly, and I truly believe that every...
Hang on, can somebody check on the mic sound? We're not getting it.
Testing?
Yeah, we got it.
My reason for sharing this is that each of these experiences begins with a dream and includes a fire in the belly, and I believe that every person has a dream...
Is that the time? Okay. Yeah, we'll give you a little longer because of the sound thing.
Mayor, no, that wasn't the timer, that's them back their work.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. And I, and I do truly believe that every person has that dream and that fire in her belly, and one of the challenges that we have as community leaders is to encourage and to facilitate people to achieve that dream and give them an opportunity to have that fire become a reality. That's the reason that I founded the Z. The Z is a charitable organization founded on the belief that imagination, passion, and the discipline of creativity are universal requirements for successful endeavors, be them artistic or otherwise, and the Z's mission is to inspire creative growth in our community. As you know, I did not ask the city for any funds to support the building of the Z, but I come here today to ask your support, support of the Virginia Beach arts community, to support the organizations that most clearly reflect the creativity of our community and can inspire all of us, no matter what our interest and no matter what our talent is to pursue our interest in our dreams. I applaud you for asking the City Manager to identify opportunities to establish a dedicated funding resource for nonprofit arts organizations, a funding source that would support both the programming and the operations of these organizations. I encourage you to follow through with that step. Doing so will make a positive difference in our community. Thank you.
Hey, thanks so much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Susan Grobey. Sorry, I'm not sure what's happening. And then after Ms. Grobey is Kate Pittman.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. I've had the honor of serving on the Virginia Beach Arts and Humanities Commission for the past six years and am the Commission's immediate past Chair. It's been twenty years since I last felt compelled to speak to City Council. The issue in question at that time was the old, that the old pavilion with its theater was being torn down to make way for this convention center, and there were no plans at that time to replace the theater. I spoke in favor of funding a replacement, and now the Sandler Center for the Performing Arts is a critical component of the town center area's success and the arts in the community. I spoke to Council then because the arts would have been significantly diminished without a theater. I stand before you today because our arts are again at a tipping point. One of my favorite days as an arts commissioner is when the organizations requesting project funding give their presentations detailing what they've accomplished in the past year and revealing their plans for the upcoming season. This year, we had twenty-nine applicants, the largest number we've ever received, ranging from groups that have been pillars of the Virginia Beach arts for thirty-plus years to new organizations with compelling offerings. Many are creating programs to increase diversity in the arts and to bring the arts to people who cannot access them in traditional ways, including our Title I schools, libraries, parks, and long-term care facilities. It's truly thrilling to hear what these dedicated arts groups are doing for our community. Then comes the most difficult day. This year, the Commission had five hundred and eighty thousand dollars to award, but the funding requests totaled nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Therefore, many programs had to be significantly underfunded, or in some cases, not funded at all. The insufficient city support unfortunately also comes at a time when the arts are facing unprecedented increases in costs, everything from venue rentals, printing, music purchases, security, personnel, and much more. Additionally, marketing costs have also raised dramatically. A few years ago, we had a local newspaper that routinely published a calendar of arts events, along with feature articles highlighting artists or unique exhibits, unique exhibits, and the arts in general. Strangely, the arts have come back from COVID shutdowns and are thriving on the outside. Theaters are full, exhibits are well-attended, and the quality is higher than ever. However, on the inside, the arts organizations are being consumed by the increased cost. Like twenty years ago, Virginia Beach is again at a tipping point regarding the vibrancy of our local arts. I sincerely ask you to support the arts in Virginia Beach and vote to create a meaningful, dedicated funding source so that this growing cadre of arts organizations can continue their work to enable Virginia Beach to be a thriving city. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Kate Pittman. After Ms. Pittman is Scott Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, my sincere thanks to you all for all that you do to balance the interests of the diverse citizens here in the largest city of the Commonwealth. My name is Kate Pittman, and I am a resident in District Five and have worked in the Virginia Beach art scene for twenty years. Having lived in several cities, traveled to fifty-eight out of the, I'm sorry, forty-eight of the fifty states, and to thirteen different countries, I can tell you that the arts and culture of this city often represent the best of its local citizens, its natural resources, open space, tourism events, and the quality of life. For the last year, I have belonged to a citizen group of passionate arts advocates who have met over a dozen times to discuss, research, and evaluate the arts offerings in the City of Virginia Beach. The collective knowledge of this group of fifteen community leaders represents over four decades of active participation in the arts and over two hundred years dedicated to the professional arts field of the arts. This spring, we formed the Virginia Beach Residents Advocacy Group titled Citizens for VB Arts. Within a few short weeks, we have over two hundred and fifty residents and constituents who have joined our efforts to encourage you all and City Council to adopt dedicated and sustainable funds for the arts in Virginia Beach. These residents are evenly distributed throughout the city, and they represent your voters. Public funding for the local arts groups has been all but stagnant for the last ten to fifteen years, while the number of participating organizations has blossomed to over forty-five different arts agencies operating in the City of Virginia Beach. This speaks to the demand and the interest from the public for arts and culture offerings in our city. The arts transcend all cultural backgrounds and ages as one of the connecting fabrics of our community. There are proven health and wellness benefits from exposure to the arts at every level. The arts beautify a city and create memorable destinations for all people. But perhaps most importantly, the arts are a driving force for attracting people to a city or a place for the quality of life benefits that the arts bring with them. Thank you all for your consideration of a dedicated, sustainable fund for the arts that will raise the bar on the future of all arts opportunities in the City of Virginia Beach, and I will leave you with this quote: "Art is the highest form of hope."
Thank you.
The next speaker is Scott Miller. After Mr. Miller is Diana Howard.
Good evening, Scott, how you doing?
Good evening. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and City Council members. Tonight, I'm here in a different role, as the President and Chair of the Board of Directors of Virginia Beach Vision, speaking on behalf of its one hundred and thirty business and community leaders. As you consider options relative to the city budget, Virginia Beach Vision wishes to offer its collective thoughts on behalf of the Virginia Beach business community. Our thoughts have been derived after numerous task forces, executive committee, and full board discussions. A vote of the full one hundred and thirty board members resulted in the information provided in a letter submitted to you recently. To highlight, we recognize that no one likes taxes, yet they are a necessary ingredient for government to operate, to provide services, and to protect citizens. The challenge is always balancing the costs to citizens and the public services desired and experienced. Yes, inflation has strained individual budgets, but it has also increased the cost of municipal services. Virginia Beach City Council in recent years has been able to lower the real estate tax and absorb the costs associated with flood protection bonding, keeping our real estate tax rate the lowest in the region at ninety-nine cents. We believe the twenty-four, twenty-five budget should retain this tax rate. As being considered, a reduction in the rate would be unwise. The proposed budget already requires the continued deferral of maintenance on public buildings, on the replacement of modernization of municipal schools, and on planned improvements to our roadways. A rate reduction will lead to higher costs, further deferrals, and the degradation of current services. Coupled with the looming costs of completing the first phase of the flood protection projects and the funding necessary for a second phase to address sea level rise, a lowered tax rate will be unsustainable. It's rare for a business-based organization to oppose a tax reduction, but under these circumstances, it is warranted. We encourage you to keep the current real estate tax rate at ninety-nine cents. I thank you for your consideration and for your continued service to the citizens of Virginia Beach. I thank you.
The next speaker is Diana Howard.
Hey, Diana, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
After Ms. Howard is George Bryant.
Okay. I'm Diana Howard, I'm Chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and yes, we are taxed enough already. So, every dollar spent on administering collective bargaining is a dollar not spent on delivering city services. There's a difference between the private sector and the public sector. The private sector has to compete in the marketplace to keep costs down. They could go out of business if customers choose to take their business elsewhere. The public sector, on the other hand, has no such control. While the private sector makes money, the public sector spends it. Councilman Hutchinson said during the informal session, "It's not about money, it's always about money." During the budget process, Council asked City Manager to show us a budget with a neutral revenue for, on the real estate tax rate. The staff came back and said they would have to eliminate three hundred personnel. Nobody wants that. How is it possible you don't, you haven't even voted to raise taxes and you would have to like eliminate so many positions? Well, Kevin Chatalier was at our meeting, and he explained that due to inflation, the cost of everything has increased, and so the city services, the cost of them were increasing. Well, that's something we're all experiencing. Every time I go to the store, my cost increased, everything for me is increasing, fixing my house increasing. You can't just keep raising the real estate tax year after year after year, you're not making the Virginia Beach more affordable by doing that. Ms. Hammond then after that said, "Well, can we at least just do two cents," right? Reduction. Departments were then asked to look for efficiencies, to tighten their budgets, and look for vacancy positions that have been vacant for a long time, maybe we could repurpose them and stuff, so they did that, right? A lot of positions that were eliminated and other positions were put in there, and even at that, the, they managed to add additional nineteen FTEs to the budget. Councilwoman Wilson is correct when she said that they're going to change those laws, right? Organized labor spent sixteen million in campaign contributions to the General Assembly, and there were bills that they wanted passed that would have mandated collective bargaining for state employees and for localities. You wouldn't have had a choice, would, if their employees wanted it, you would have to implement it. The bills contained arbitration, an Evergreen Clause, you know, the contract stays in effect until a new one is done. The unions were given access to all employee information so that they can contact them, thirty minutes per day to meet with them during working hours, automatic pay deduction of union dues. This is not a partisan issue. Democrats have a slim majority in the House and the Senate, and these bills fail to pass the finance and the appropriation committees.
Thank you.
Say no.
The next speaker is George Bryant. After Mr. Bryant is Scott McLunney.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, members of the Council, Mr. Dehaney. I'm George Bryant, and I've lived in Wolfsnare Plantation for fifty-six years. The budget is a massive undertaking, and Mr. Dehaney and his staff are to be commended for the work and the detail that they've provided. Few people can comprehend it all, including me, but I want to emphasize three things: fiscal responsibility, affordable and affordable responsibility. Both were frequently mentioned at the community conversations earlier this year. Fiscal responsibility is the idea that government should be responsible to the needs and desires of the citizens. Affordability is the quality of being inexpensive. And then there's the fiduciary responsibility you have to the citizens to run this city in their best interest. Inflationary pressures and economic uncertainty make meeting those responsibilities very difficult, and majority of citizens of Virginia Beach still find it difficult to make ends meet, as evidenced by the daily inflation pressures. The city says the proposed tax rate of ninety-seven cents is reasonable, but it still represents an increase of four point six percent over last year. The monthly utility fees will increase from, I think, ten to twenty percent. These fees, trash, sewer, water availability, stormwater, et cetera, used to be paid through the tax base. If added back to the general tax rate, the real estate and personal property tax bill on the average home would increase by twenty-five percent or more. So, our tax rate is not as affordable as y'all would have us believe. I suggest to you that you can get the rate closer to the flat rate of ninety-two cents to meet your obligations to the citizens by reducing, by reducing the vacancy factor, reducing your support of festivals, of staying out of public, private partnerships, and staying away from collective bargaining, which she addressed a while ago, and that is a very expensive thing, I believe. Over the years, our income has increased fifteen hundred percent. Our home value, sixteen hundred percent, and our real estate taxes, three thousand percent, plus the separate utility fees. This tells me that you are not fully meeting the three responsibilities mentioned above. Virginia Beach has a lot of pluses, but writing big checks to the city leaves me with the feeling that you own my paid-for home, not me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Scott McLunney. After Mr. McLunney is Cody Connor.
Good evening, welcome.
Hey, good evening, thank you for having me. My name is Scott McLunney, and I am a resident of Virginia Beach, and I'm here to ask that you guys consider funding the arts in a more sustainable and consistent manner. So, not only am I a resident of Virginia Beach, I'm a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach. I was born in Virginia Beach General, down the street. I'm a graduate of Kempstow High School. My daughter is a graduate of Kempstow High School. In K through twelve, I've been a member of the arts program, participating in something almost, you know, every year along the way, even to the point where my mom wanted me to consider pursuing arts as a career. So, but as luck would have it, I went off to college, got a business degree in economics and finance, but more recently, I've gotten a world-class education, working with Arts Alliance in the Vibe District, to see how arts and business not only work together, but they actually propel each other forward, and I think that's a, that's a very important thing, because when I take that back to my day job of being a financial advisor planner, it is discipline and consistency that drive, drive at home, whether you're talking about ROI or better retirement plan, I tell my clients it is time in the market, not timing the market, that wins the day. So, if we can take this same philosophy back to the budget and provide to the arts community more consistency and reliable, reliability in the budget, then I think it's, I think it's a win-win for the city, whether you're talking ROI or... I don't have all the numbers, I don't have the graphs, I don't have the stats with me, I don't have the time to do that in, in three minutes, but what I would like to leave you with is, when the people come to visit this wonderful city that we get to call home, yes, they talk about the great places, the beaches, the food, the things they get to participate in, but it is the arts and the culture that is embedded in those things that provide not only the tonality, but the inflection in those conversations. And for that, I would like you to consider making the budget, or the consistency in the budget. That's it.
Thank you very much, appreciate your input.
The next speaker is Cody Connor. After Ms. Connor is Melissa Lukason.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Dyer. We already have the lowest real estate taxes in the region, and they'll probably never be low enough for some people. But hey, I'm, I'm all for lowering real estate taxes. I don't even own real estate, but I got no problem with my neighbors having a little bit more jangle in their pocket, except for if we can't afford it, and certainly not if it comes at the expense of our kids. And that's what this real estate tax decrease is getting ready to do, it's going to take millions of dollars from our school's budget. Now, some people in the community, community know me. Mainly, I'm known for my advocacy as a father. I'm not a perfect parent, I don't know everything. I wish I knew how to get my kids to do their homework or clean the room without having to ask them a hundred times. I don't know if the word skibitty is a good thing, or a bad thing, or just random, but I do know a few things. I know a few things with certainty. Kids come first. A good father always eats last. And if you take from your children just so you can have more, you are wrong. Full stop. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Lukason. After Ms. Lukason is Markel Bonds.
Good evening, Council.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council. I'm here to share my opposition to a two-cent reduction in real estate property taxes. Simply put, the decision to reduce property taxes by two cents is welfare for the wealthy. Do not be misled by the allure of lower taxes. Consider for a moment who benefits most from these tax cuts. It is not the struggling family trying to make ends meet, or the individual working multiple jobs just to afford their mortgage. These reductions primarily benefit high-income individuals and corporations who own substantial real estate holdings. Meanwhile, the burden of funding essential public services, such as education, infrastructure, public safety, falls disproportionately on the shoulders of working-class families and small-business owners like myself. The twenty-twenty-four assessments of homes under five hundred thousand at the current rate of ninety-nine cents are seeing nominal tax increases to their monthly bill. It is the affluent property owners who reap the lion's share of the benefits. Four of our council members own homes with an assessment over half a million dollars. An order of highest value is Mr. Remick at one point four million, Ms. Wilson at nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, Mr. Schulman at seven hundred and twelve thousand, and Mr. Taylor at six sixty-four. Mr. Taylor, your personal property tax did increase the most, but you're also sitting on one point five acres in the middle of King's Grant. That is some valuable real estate that you own, which is building generational wealth for your family. I have no issue with any of you owning expensive homes or stacked bank accounts, but I do have a problem with council members using your voting privileges on the city budget for your own benefit. Vice Mayor Wilson, don't you own multiple properties in the city? Your million-dollar oceanfront condo only saw a six hundred and fifty-two dollar increase to your tax bill, so when you tell people the new assessments are costing you thousands, you're either lying or crying, and neither is acceptable. If you should, if you're having trouble paying your fair share of taxes and it's causing you financial harm, then you should sell a few of them. Dr. Ross Hammond, sixty-one percent of your constituents are not homeowners, and this tax degree, decrease does not move the needle enough for your residents to afford homeownership. So, why would you propose this at the retreat in the first place? We must recognize that reducing property taxes is not a gift to the people, it is a gift to the privileged few. It perpetuates inequality and widens the gap between the haves and the have-nots. As elected representatives, it is your duty to ensure that everyone contributes their fair share and not give welfare to the wealthy just so you can get re-elected this November. We didn't ask for your two cents. As a matter of fact, if you really want to help the residents of the city, you should be increasing property taxes by two cents and working on a more robust tax abatement program for our aging and disabled citizens. We want fully-funded schools, we want collective bargaining, and a completed city infrastructure projects. Thank you.
The next speaker is Markel Bonds. After Mr. Bonds is Eugene Cohen.
Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you to the City Council, Mayor Bobby D., City Manager, our City Clerks that are here today. If you guys wouldn't mind, could we just give a round of applause to all of the work that our leaders are doing for the city of Virginia Beach, please? My name is Markel Bonds, some people call me Kello. I am a business owner newly to Virginia Beach, also a, work as a development officer at the Virginia Moca, also a role that I've been in for under a year. And what I rose to date to speak about is the increase and the dedication for funding, and sustainable funding for the arts community. What I understand is that if this was, is successful, this would be something that hasn't happened in quite a while, and I think that it's something that's very important when we think about the longevity of Virginia Beach. Me personally, I'm from a small town called Beffert, Virginia. I came out here to Christopher Newport University, did my undergrad, thereafter went to Norfolk State University, with plans to leave to go to Atlanta because I felt that there was nothing to do in Hampton Roads, and then the initiation of the Something in the Water Festival, and a lot of different things that are happening here in Hampton Roads as well as Virginia Beach, have shown the light not only to myself, but I think to a younger demographic, which I feel that I'm representing, representing today, that, you know, feels a need to find something to... I'm representing today, that, you know, fills a need to find something to do. And what I find art to be is a catalyst for change. It's also something that creates conversation. It's something that creates community, right? It's something that is an equalizer regardless of your positioning on a personal property tax. If you see a piece of art, you can have an experience with that. And I think it's very vital, as we look at the future of our Hampton Roads community, to include that. I definitely want to thank you guys again for all that you are already doing, not only for our business owners in Virginia Beach, the Vibe Creative District, the Virginia Mocha, and all the amazing projects that you guys have going on. But I think that I wanted to rise today just to say that we want to make sure that, as we look to the future, right, we don't have Virginia Beach positioned as a retirement community. We want to keep our young people here. This is the beach. We want it to be fun. And I think that when we think about this, you know, for me, it's a no-brainer. So, thank you guys so much for all you're doing. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thanks a bunch for coming.
The next speaker is Eugene Cohen.
Good evening.
After Mr. Cohen is Tammy Mullins Rice.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and to the City Council. I just want to challenge your thinking, as you're talking about that two-cent deduction. Really think about the Virginia Beach poverty rate. In the five-year study that you already have published, it says 10% of our community will be in poverty. So, as you're reducing taxes, you're also reducing services to help those that are less fortunate. A study that has been done by the Center of Poverty and Social Policy at Columbia University has a powerful statement that says that prices have risen more quickly for those at the bottom of income distribution than for those that are at the top, a phenomenon dubbed inflation inequality. In other words, with inflation, it also brings another inequality for those that are on the bottom so that they cannot be able to survive in this city, which is so prosperous, with a median income of $89,000. It's up to you to make sure equality happens in our city, not only as it relates to taxes, as it relates to housing, as it relates to services. It's a big burden, but I believe you have the strength and the courage to make it happen. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Tammy Mullins Rice. After Ms. Mullins Rice is Donnie Gregory.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me again. This will be year number three that I have come before you during the budget meeting to talk about C-Tech and the C-Tech Rec Center and equity that we have been forced to live with. So, when we're talking about equity, I know we're talking about money. I'm going to get to that in a second. Our C-Tech Rec Center has one community room compared to all the other rec centers in the city. We're the smallest. We're three times smaller than Bow Creek, which is the next size up from our civic, our, sorry, recreation center. We have a pool with no observation deck unless you stand outside and peek through the bushes and look in the window. Then you can see your kids swim. We have one gym. Oh, thank you. We got new floors in our weight room that's the size of a postage stamp, but we appreciate the new floors. Thank you so much for that. So, now, let's talk about revenue and our proximity to the beach. If our rec center was improved, enlarged, renovated, and put along the size of the other rec centers in the city, think about the revenue that you could get from people who are coming to visit the oceanfront, because we're so close. We're 10 blocks away. But you're not getting that revenue, because they'll come to the rec center, and they'll see that little parking lot and what little is to do, and they turn around and go away. So, we are looking for equity for C-Tech, for our rec center. We hear, "Oh, we can't expand it because there's marshlands behind it." Jensen's right next door. They're in the marshlands, so why is it we can't expand, but they can? There's a property right next door that's been vacant for years, up for sale, that could become the new parking lot, and you could expand the rec center within the area that it is in right now. What we're asking for is equity. We want equity. We want the same amenities that other people have throughout the city. I have a petition that's been signed by citizens of Virginia Beach. I'll turn in the hard copies of those. I also have it electronic, so if you need me to send it to you that way, I can do that as well. We also are asking for renovations for our park. Because the parking was taken away from us when the streets were widened for Birdnet, we no longer have space to park so that we can use our park in an adequate way. So, there is very little use for it. We do thank the city manager for talking with us and trying to come up with some solutions in the meantime. Here's what I'll say. I do believe that you have the means to make this decision and make it right for the citizens of C-Tech. If you can find $48 million to do a facelift to the oceanfront, which is a nip and a tuck, you can find money to renovate the C-Tech Recreation Center, as well as give us back our parking. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donnie Gregory.
Good evening, sir. How you doing, Mayor Dyer? My name is Donnie Gregory, and I just wanted to stand and tell you that I'm the new president of that great and wonderful city called C-Tech. I had an oath of office on last Sunday, and we had over 200 people to sign as witnesses to that great ceremony. I do personally want to thank Mr. Taylor, Mrs. Wooton, and Mrs. Ross for coming and to be a part of that great celebration or ceremony. I've only been living in Virginia Beach for 68 years, right in that same little local community called C-Tech, and it's an honor, it's a privilege for me to have been elected to serve in this capacity that I am now. I don't come as a foe, but I come as a friend. I do have an office, and I would like to sit down and talk to each and every one of you, along with the letter that I will send you formally introducing myself. And I'll be in my office four days a week, Tuesday through Friday, from 10 o'clock in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. And I don't come with a stick. I don't come with a brick. I come with open arms and solutions to some of the problems that are going on in C-Tech. It seems like an easy fix for me, but I mean, you on your board, you know better than me, but maybe I can show you some ways that we can fix some of the, look like, easy fix to me that the community is asking for. And I thank you very much for this space and time, and to my, to my, Mr. Worthy, who he couldn't make my ceremony, he was out of town, but I do want to thank all of you, and thank you for this opportunity and space.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Mayor, we have one speaker via WebEx. Our WebEx is not working on the House audio. However, we want to try and see if we can hear the audio through a telephone, if that's okay. Are you good?
Okay.
Vic Nichols, you are unmuted and may begin.
Ask him again.
Ms. Nichols, if you can begin.
That's perfect.
Ms. Nichols, one more time, if you could begin.
There's a fitting war for public safety folks, especially that is raising taxes. Agree on a pay scale we can deal with, so our seniors aren't priced out of their homes. The budget can be cut, but you have to want to do it. Lastly, inflation is already taxing us enough. Some of us can't make up the difference with campaign donations and in-kind favors. We're tired of having our money go into private ventures while being told it will increase the tax base and do anything for us. The seniors in this city who don't have access to all of the computers and the like, this is what they're saying. They're tired of this. Be kind to the old people. You guys are one of them. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank every one of you for coming and participating, you know, with your government. You know, thank you all. God bless you.